Hello. How's that? What's your name? Rui? Rui? Come here, I want to shake your hand. How are you? Where are you from?
Yeah.
In twenty-four, we'll call the city council special meeting to order. Please call the row.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Here.
Councilmember Prashadlik?
Here.
Moving on to hearing of the public, the first hearing of the public is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard? Anyone wish to be heard?
I'm back. So, you know, I just wanted, my name is Mark Schmier. I just wanted to sort of go through and reiterate, we sent a letter to council and just highlight some of these things. I'm sure my time's already started, but start, the process started in May of twenty-one. Cannabis sales, medical cannabis sales were fifty percent of the market, which was strong enough that we were excited about this. November second, twenty-twenty-two, announced the point scoring winners, of which we were first. And at that time, medical dropped by another twenty-five percent, now only making up fifty, twenty-five percent of the market. We continued throughout the process diligently to work with staff, with Mara, going back and forth, site meetings and site visits, and getting ready for a special land use approval, which we got on February twenty-first. There was a significant shift in the market at that point. We had no control over that, couldn't have predicted it. Medical sales had dropped by eighty percent. In September of twenty-three, we found there was a sewer line on our site that we knew nothing about, we needed to investigate. We went to get an extension. We had our site plan extension approved. So, to the, to date, we have done everything by the book. We still have until February of twenty-five, we still have our site plan extended. At that point, we started communicating with the city through our attorney to talk about recreational. We continue to spend money up, up until today. We have spent in excess of eight hundred thousand dollars since November, since we were approved, another three hundred thousand dollars or so, trying to get this moved forward. We, I think I might have mentioned last time, to have a project that's going to be about two and a half million dollars to, you know, it'd be like opening a Bieber store. I mean, we, we, we would have no market whatsoever. We'd be hiring people from the community and just letting them go. And the value of that, that building, brand-new building, which we'd have about two and a half million dollars in, would be about six hundred thousand dollars per the, you know, signature and associates. We did pay our taxes. We had a, you know, debt at the corporate office. It was, it was missed. And about a month later, we paid the taxes. We gave to charities, we did remediation of asbestos. We spent time and money, we did not sit idle. And I just want to make sure everybody here understands that. We did not sit idle. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening, council. I'm David Rudoy, attorney for Holistic Health Wayne. You know, I've stated this before, but I think the competitive process that was done for the medical licensure here in the city of East Point was as good as I've seen in the state of Michigan. I believe that it is appropriate and the best measure for both the city of East Point, as well as the people that were awarded and went through the competitive process for medical, for the city to enact an ordinance, you know, commonly called the conversion ordinance, but essentially an ordinance that would amend the original medical marijuana ordinance to include recreational marijuana, that would essentially convert over the licenses to allow both license types for the same retail center. The, the process was done extremely well. It will meet the competitive process standards of the MRTMA. We've seen case after case where cities have done this and that those ordinances have always been upheld. Chiefly, Ann Arbor, Waterford, Ferndale, three cities in the area, all did it in this way, where they first passed medical ordinances, then switched it over to recreational, allowed the people who won the competitive process for medical to essentially go right into being recreational retail centers when the city decided to go forward with that process. All of them have been upheld. And not a single time in the state of Michigan has a city, and, and those are just three cities I'm naming. Cities across the state of Michigan have done this. Not a single time has a lawsuit been successful at striking down such an ordinance. It clearly meets the competitive process required in the MRTMA. If the city were to choose to do such an ordinance change, where we'll call it a conversion ordinance, the city would be entitled to fifty-six thousand dollars per license, per retail location, per year. So, if the city were to go the other way and start this process from square one, given how long it took the last time, it's probably going to be a couple of years before you have a retail establishment up and running, which means, you know, if you take the three licenses at fifty-six thousand dollars, we're talking about three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars that the city would be missing out on by starting this process at square one. That's not to mention all the caught, like-
You have thirty seconds?
Thank you. Not to mention all the community benefits that would be lost that these licensees have agreed to give to the city for those years, as well as, you know, the employment opportunities missed and the costs on the city at redoing this whole process that the city already did such a great job on. So, I just, I beg of, I beg of the council to enact such an ordinance, to amend the medical ordinance to allow for recreational retail. As I said, I think it's what's best for the city of East Point, and it's certainly what's fair to the people that have been on board this whole time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Aaron Guyer, and I am the corporate attorney for Sharktail. We are also one of your three winners. Now, I was here last, when we had our last session, and there were discussions of possibly three, maybe four adult-use licenses. Do, does this city really want six marijuana facilities in its city? I don't think it does. Because if it did, then the discussion point would have been not three or four, it would have been six. It wasn't. So, co-location, as my colleague described, is the way to do it. I have been on this file since day one. I was actively involved in the application process. I was actively involved in the appellate process, and I saw what the city had to go through. You don't want to do that again. You don't want the time, you don't want the effort, you don't want the cost. My colleague threw out, you know, locations such as Waterford and Ann Arbor. He threw out Ferndale, Ed Lapierre on top of that list. Bottom line is, it's effective. It avoids your selection process. Your people have already been vetted. It's cheaper. And more importantly, it avoids lawsuits. And I'm sure Mr. Albright would rather be handling matters other than handling lawsuits from aggrieved, non-winning participants. As my colleague indicated, the conversion process has survived judicial scrutiny. There have been challenges to these conversion ordinances. Every one failed. Why? Because it's a legitimate process. And so, we're asking this council to do just that. And that is, let's adopt a conversion ordinance.
Thirty seconds?
Thank you. Let's have those three licensees approved, and let's have this city start earning some revenue from them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me know when my time starts.
Go right ahead.
Ready? Good.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Vitale. I am not affiliated with any of the three individuals who were awarded the licenses under the medical marijuana. I do, however, know Mr. Aiello and Mr. Guyer. I have worked with them professionally in my law practice and find them to be respectable and upstanding individuals. That being said, medical marijuana is dead. I think it's two or three percent. In fact, I don't know of any place that just sells medical marijuana. That being the case, I'm going to be pretty blunt and straightforward. The three winners did everything this, this city wanted them to do. They put money into the city, they worked hard, and they're prepared to go forward. I think it would only be fair that they be awarded the licenses because they were the ones who came before this honorable council and, and put forth everything you wanted. To turn around at this point and reopen it, I agree with everything the prior speakers have said, would just cause the city more money, more time. And most importantly, if you get these dispensaries up and running, they will donate to the city. I, I grew up in St. Clair Shores. I know East Point very well. Plenty of my friends were Shamrocks, and we spent a lot of time at Spindler Park. So, believe me, I'm from this area. But now I'm living in New Baltimore, where my law practice is. And we have four dispensaries there. And they put a lot of money into our city. And they buy fire trucks, police cars, training, all of that stuff. And not just for the city itself, but for charities, baseball teams, things of that nature. To further delay the process would ultimately delay that benefit to the city. And again, it's only fair to award it to the three company, or the three entities that came forward and did everything the city wanted them to do. And there's a reason that you awarded these licenses to these individuals. You found them to be the most qualified after the vetting process. So, I don't know why that would change, unless, you know, one of them has been convicted of some horrible crime in the meantime, or something of that nature. But I think assuming that they're going to stay in the same location and go through the same process that you wanted them to originally, I don't see any reason why you could not award them an adult recreational license. That being said, I think it's only fair, and I think that they deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening. I'm Mike Beck. I'm the director of Community and Government Affairs for Common Citizen. One of the other, the third of the award winners for medical. I've been to several of these meetings, first time I've spoken, but I felt there are some things I could point out as well. I agree with everything they said, because of the industry and where we're at. But let me show, share some figures. And these all come off the CRA, Cannabis Regulatory Agency's website. When the ordinance was adopted here, the previous month's medical sales were forty-two million, or thirty-eight percent of the market, total cannabis market. When the applications were submitted, medical sales were thirty-two million a month, the previous month, twenty-one percent of the total market. Recently, the numbers for October twenty-twenty-four were released. The total sales for the month in medical were nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars through the whole state of Michigan, or zero-point-three-six percent of the market, meaning the adult-use market is ninety-nine-point-six-four percent currently. AU sales, as a counterpoint to that, for that month, were over two-hundred-and-sixty-seven million. That's where your ten percent excise tax is applied. So, you can imagine that number. That excise tax gets shared with counties and municipalities every year. Last year's state return revenue to counties and municipalities was over eighty-seven million. Why is that important? Well, we believe in community support, very, very much so, and it was in our application. We also believe you have to do, do well to be able to do good. We are a gold qualifier in the CRA Social Equity All-Star Program that we substantially reinvest our team and our organization's time, talents, and treasure in the communities we operate. We'd love to bring one of our award-winning stores to East Point. It was also mentioned at the last workshop that we haven't purchased the buildings that our site is on in Grashit. That is correct. However, they are all under contract, and we've been paying pretty substantial carrying costs for those contracts throughout this course of time. And with design costs and all of the other things, we've spent some money on some small-scale, not-for-profit work here in the city. We've got about three-quarters of a million dollars invested on that project already. I can only speak for us, but they've already spoken for themselves, and you hear some of the same things. We would urge the council to do the conversion ordinance. Our outside council agrees. Case law shows, thank you. Case law shows that it has stood the test. We've seen it in other municipalities. We are in other municipalities that have both medical and adult use. And we'd love to come and get in here and start doing well in East Point so we can do good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Chris Aiello. I'm on Mound Road. I'm an attorney, and I represent one of the applicants here tonight, one of the three winners. Their location is on Eight Mile and Kelly. And so, I've been in this industry since twenty-sixteen, from the very beginning, starting with the State Bar of Michigan, when we formed a medical marijuana committee comprised of approximately eleven attorneys that jumped to six-hundred-and-sixty-two attorneys, the fastest-growing committee in the history of the State Bar of Michigan within the first two years. And it's been one heck of a ride. East Point got into the game early on and awarded medical licenses like a number of communities did that we were involved with. We've been involved from Traverse City all the way down to Luna Beer. We've won some, we've lost some, we've kicked up the dust everywhere. We've tried to do our very best. And so, my clients do a great job. And by way of example, this is a, a relationship between a municipality, because this is a regulated industry, and the entrepreneurs that decided to go after the gold shovel and the proverbial out-west gold rush. One great example is with my clients is in the city of Port Huron. They opened up in March after two-and-a-half-year delay. I think this city leads the way with the city of Warren in the longest route, the longest drive towards a adult license. Warren is still going on in the court system. But, thank God, East Point is not, and we're on the verge of awarding adult licenses. They're about three-and-a-half years into it. And they haven't seen a penny, like you haven't seen a penny, of gratuity or basketball courts or anything. But by way of example, of how this works hand-in-hand with the community is, my clients in Port Huron, opening up this year, were the official sponsor of the Mackinac Island Race in Port Huron, where they spent about twenty-five thousand dollars donated to the city so that they could put on this massive drone show, which was awesome. And it showed all the Moses' roses in the sky and the, all of the other benefits that came about that as a result of donating to the city twenty-five thousand. And on top of that, as part of the gratuity and happiness and joy to be in that city, because they were, they were embraced. They are now the official sponsor of the Port Huron Prowlers Hockey Team, a, you know, step or two below the NHL, where these guys play twenty-eight home games, and Moses' roses name is all over-
Thirty seconds.
McMoRan Marina. And that cost them a lot of money, too. And that's gone on in the city of Waterford with women rock shows and a number of other events that they are hand-in-hand with community and the Chamber of Commerce. And so, that's what goes on. But we don't feel the love yet. We got to get the love. The industry needs the love between the regulated body and the industry. The, the, the three winners are entitled. I'll just tell you how, they're entitled to get the adult license like the rest of the industry, and you may not be involved in it, and you don't see it. But that's kind of how it goes. And that's the only way. And thank you. Give the three a chance, it will pay off.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. I'm not affiliated with any of the three winners. My perspective is from a resident point of view. I know East Point has never specifically voted on adult use or recreational dispensaries for East Point. Yes, back in twenty-eighteen, when it was a statewide proposal that we voted on, East Point, I believe, East Point voters at that time, about little more than two-thirds voted yes for the proposal. The proposal is kind of two parts, though. Part of it was, should it be, you know, decriminalized? Should it be, should people be able to use marijuana recreationally in their home if they're over twenty-one? Which I think, I'd say probably ninety-nine percent of people agree with, whatever you want to do as an adult, you should be entitled to do. But the other part was the opening up retail. And I think that's where people hesitate. I know I struggled with it a little bit. Obviously, if we're going to allow people to use marijuana, they have to be able to purchase it somewhere. You know, I still kind of look at it as one of those retail-type businesses that aren't necessarily necessary in a city, along the lines of liquor stores and bars and strip clubs and things like that, that are all perfectly legal. And I have no problem with anybody utilizing, but you don't always want one in your neighborhood, or how many do you want in your community? So, we went through a whole process of approving three medical marijuana facilities, three locations. They are zoned properly. They got special land use approval. They got site plan approval. We put a lot of money working with the city planners, with AEW, went before the planning commission, city council. That's a lot of effort into these three locations. My concern is that sometimes when we have visions of dollar signs dancing in our heads, we get a little carried away. And I'm concerned that you are going to want to put more establishments, thinking that it's additional revenue. I don't think that's necessary. We have three locations. Regardless of what business is going to set up shop there, there are three locations that I'm assuming that back when this was decided, the surrounding businesses, the surrounding-
You have thirty seconds.
-residents had no significant issue with. So, I really feel that we should stick with those three. And whatever process you want to use, that's completely up to you. But when you were talking last time about four, five, six dispensaries, we don't need it. You know, we're, we're a small city, and to try and stuff more dispensaries into five square miles is a little excessive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Seeing none, the hearing of the public is closed. We'll go on to new business and begin the discussion on the recreational marijuana workshop. Would anyone on council like to open up on this? Or administration? I don't know if you want to highlight any of the, I guess, opinions that were provided to council.
Sure. So, from the previous meeting, we took the initial feedback that was provided for the amount of licenses, and that was amended in the ordinance presented. We also attached a lessons learned from the previous process that talked about the different topics that were not addressed or that needed to be removed or add clarification. And those things were also added into the ordinance that was presented to council. There were also sections within the lessons learned regarding the policy, where some of the things- the things similar to, where is it? The scoring that was updated in the policy, the things that council did not want to be a part of the scoring process for receiving a license, that was amended as well in the scoring. The separation between the scoring was amended as well. And then all of the adjustments essentially are on that lessons learned from medical.
I had a question about that is, so when looking at the proposed ordinance that we received, it just kind of lists considerations. Did administration, would you be seeking us to, I guess, outline actual points specifically? If, if that's the route we go?
What do you mean, specific points?
Some of the previous ordinances we had had categories broken down, like ten points, fifty, you know, something like that, or one point, which seemed not useful.
So in the, in the policy, policy section, which is behind the ordinance, we did make recommendations on the numbers. So page three, letter C, starts off where it goes to the scoring criteria, where we give a recommendation on the amount of points per scoring section.
All right. Thoughts from council?
Should we just kind of go one thing at a time here? Like, I mean, I guess there's like two things, the ordinance and then the scoring?
Sure.
I guess one, I'd have one major question, I guess, at first, especially with speakers. Maybe a question for you, Mr. Albright, on this idea of a conversion ordinance. What exactly do they mean by that?
I believe what they mean is automatically giving the, the three entities that were awarded medical marijuana licenses, because in their opinion, they've already gone through a selection process, which they have, and they were the top three winners, that they would automatically then, once the city passes an adult-use recreational ordinance, that they would automatically get preferential treatment for however many licenses. So if the city was only to award three licenses, the three winners for medical marijuana would get the three adult-use licenses.
What if, like, anything has changed in the ordinance at all? Still could do that?
Well, they're, they're arguing for an ordinance that would allow for that.
Or I guess I'm just saying, I guess if the whole process is supposed to be competitive, but either something has changed that would be a lot different from the competitive process last time? I guess like, just for example, we've changed some of the scoring in the proposed, I guess, policy.
Administration is making, based on changes in state law and also lessons learned, as referenced in the memorandum, that there would be different scoring, different categories of scoring and different point values for scoring. So in the proposal that's before the council this evening, the scoring goes from zero to one-hundred-and-fifty, and the ordinance itself refers to the criteria, but it doesn't set a score value. That actually is contained in the policy, which repeats the criteria, then assigns a score for each of those categories. Then there's also several categories that don't have, they're basically factors to be considered, but they aren't assessed a score per se. So you have the ordinance, and then you have the policy, which actually sets forth what those scores would be. And of course, the council, that's subject to however the council wants to assess those value, or score values, but this is what city administration had come up with as what city administration believes, based on past practice, would be appropriate for assigning each category a particular score.
So I guess can we change that, you know, go to this proposal, and it also be conversion ordinance?
No, conversion ordinance is, is something entirely different. Conversion is automatically given, the three for medical marijuana, automatically given. That's what, when they say conversion, that's what they want to do. We have a recreational ordinance, our adult-use recreational ordinance, but because we have, we have a medical marijuana license ordinance that pre-existed this, those people that won that would automatically get this.
Wouldn't we still have to at least address all these items in case in the future maybe a business left? You'd have to do the competitive process again with the marijuana license? Or I guess the whole thing about this conversion ordinance is, what if there's one new applicant this time that didn't exist last time? How can you consider?
That's why city administration is recommending what's before the council this evening.
Okay.
Okay. And I know that we've, without going into detail, I know that we've had a couple of meetings in closed session to address the different legal scenarios, and the council had two different proposals for ordinances, and this is kind of the mixing together as it's called Proposal Four.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
When we, you're gonna have to help me with, because I don't know how long ago we, we adopted that we would go for medical marijuana, but did we not opt out of recreational?
We, the city did opt out, so if the city does adopt an adult-use recreational ordinance, we would have to pass a resolution indicating that we're opting in, and then we would pass the ordinance.
Okay, so when, when people put their application in, it was only for medical because that's all we had?
That's correct.
And at that time, the statistics for medical marijuana was pretty high. Now, we, we learned that it's very low now that who would, who would build a building a million dollars when only two or three percent of the people would go to a medical facility when they could go to a recreational?
Based on the information that's been presented this evening and in previous meetings as well, the industry with regard to medical marijuana has trained, changed dramatically in a very short period of time.
We all received from the city manager a list of all the lawsuits we had to deal with. It's substantial. What you're feeling, Rich, if we did a conversational ordinance and that process, would we, do you feel that we would get the same amount of lawsuits if people said it wasn't fair?
Actually, in thinking about the number of lawsuits for medical marijuana, I don't think the city had that many lawsuits. I think it was probably less than five. I mean, I know some people would say, well, what, any more than one lawsuit's a lot of lawsuits, but in the grand scheme of things, especially compared to some of the lawsuits that have been filed against surrounding communities, but it remains to be seen if someone would file a lawsuit based on what's before the council this evening. If the council went for a full-on conversion ordinance, there would be lawsuits. I know that some of the speakers have said that all of those cases, or any cases that challenge that have not been successful, I don't know whether someone would file a lawsuit against the city, if the city went the way of conversion. And I've already given some legal opinions as well in closed session as far as, you know, different directions the city may want to take.
Well, I know there's, there's been some concern, why haven't the three built their building? That's not gonna happen. I don't know, would you spend two million dollars if all you had is medical marijuana? No, I don't think you would. So I'm looking at the conversational ordinance, and I know there's a lot of people upset that they didn't build, but we also, if you look further, you understand why they didn't, that they were waiting for this, if was the city gonna do anything about recreational marijuana? Now, we're, we're sitting here tonight making that decision, and I have a feeling that's probably gonna happen, and what term that it's gonna be approved, I don't know. I don't know if I want to go through that whole process. I know the council would not be concerned, would not be involved in the interviewing and the paperwork and the three people, and I don't know who they are. We don't have to tonight. I'm not sure. I know you got two, but you're missing a third one. They are gonna come up with a recommendation, who would get however many licenses the city decides to give out. So I know there's a lot of people upset with the three, but I don't know if I want to drag the city through lawsuits and, and scoring and everything like that. So I would not object to a conversational ordinance to, let's wipe it clean, let's get it over with, let's do it, and that's it, you know? That's it. We don't have to worry about your score, we don't have to worry about the lawsuits, we don't have to worry about a year or two years, which we were told last week, or the last workshop, right? Yep? That it would take a couple of years if we, if we went the standard way that we're talking about tonight. I don't know if I want to drag ourselves through that. So I would, I would not hesitate to vote for a conversational ordinance at this time.
I ask maybe one overarching question. I think it's sort of related to, I guess, Councilman Curly's suggestion here. So I guess we've got an array of options between doing exactly what's proposed and doing a conversion ordinance, and then there's, you know, wiggle room, I guess, in between the two, basically. What would the process look like for, let's just say, one of the three applicants that did receive a license? How much duplication, I guess, and extra work would there be? I guess this would be a question for you, Ms. Walton, like, in that whole process? So we, you know, of course, we've made the committee before, and now, obviously, we have a whole lessons learned. That can probably go like a little faster. I guess what do you foresee in like, with like, special land uses and the site plans? How, how would that all work for like an applicant that won one of the medical marijuana licenses, assuming they put in for recreational?
So my understanding is that it would be a complete new application that would have to be reviewed. So it would start initially by reviewing it for completion and then go through the normal processes medical did. So it'd be very similar to the previous process.
So then what about the part through the planning commission? If they've, you know, they've started, I think all of them are at least at some point in that process, can they just continue at the point they left off?
That would be a rich question. I don't, so if it's, you're saying the people that are, that have the medical license, if they get the recreational, could they pick up? Rich, that would be a question for you. I don't.
Well, we haven't had that discussion, actually, between administration to see what exactly that would look like, because the direction that we had received was what's before the council this evening. So if council was considering what Councilman Curly suggested, suggested, then it would be, we'd have to look at this a little further in detail.
Well, I guess for, for either of them, though, I guess, say, say it was what Councilman Curly's saying, the conversion ordinance, or the other way, they still have to go through the planning commission, they can just pick up where they left off?
It might be a possibility.
What is, okay. Yeah, I guess, just, I guess basically I was trying to get at, what's the difference between the two? One, if we do the conversion ordinance, basically, we're like done once we, what, vote an ordinance? And we're basically done at that point, and then how much longer is it going to take to, I guess we've just gotta, you know, takes two meetings to do the ordinance, maybe more if, you know, there was any delay in that, then we'll have the, the committee get together. Well, gotta have a certain amount of time for them to put all their applications in. Sorry about my voice tonight. And then have that committee, and we did have sort of a timeline, so, which I guess don't have right in front of me, but I guess I was just trying to think about that and see what it would be on these businesses also. I guess it'd be the extra five-thousand-dollar application would be the monetary difference, and then they can pick back up where they're at. I guess that's kind of what it sounds like.
Mr. Mayor?
If I may.
Mr. Mayor? Rich, my understanding would be if the conversion ordinance is passed, that there would be no committee, correct?
Well, that remains to be seen, because the direction that we had.
I did hear a question. What was it? What, her statement, I did hear.
I'm asking with the conversion method, whether there would even be a need for a committee?
Oh.
I don't think I was suggesting that in what I was just saying. It'd be the ordinance would pass, and we'd basically be done. I was just trying to figure out what's the time difference between the conversion ordinance and if we did it the proposed way.
I guess what I was thinking was sort of a combination of the two, that medical facilities are open and operating by a certain date near the end of next year, will be converted maximum with three licenses. If license becomes available, then this ordinance kicks in. Does that make sense?
Yes. Mr. Mayor?
So conversion, but setting up the structure in case, you know, one of those facilities doesn't open or, or one shuts down. Ms. Holman?
So we do have, I guess, an eligibility list, so we have all of the applicants for medical that were scored in order. So it might be that, that would be the list that would be gone, would go back to number four, number five, that, that sort of thing? If, if the conversion is for the first three, you might have to include those.
Rich, have you, I haven't thought about that. Have you?
We haven't had any discussion, just because from the direction we had received previously, that, again, without giving away anything that's discussed in closed session, it didn't seem like the council wanted to move in that direction at the time. So that's why, that is why what's in front of the council tonight is something which I thought was in the direction the council wanted to go. But if now there's been a change, then we can certainly look at that, bring something back for the council for consideration.
Mayor, if I may. So, I'm, I'm sorry, were you, were you finished? I didn't.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So I got a couple of concerns, because frankly, I believe, I, I don't believe that we'll be without litigation, just based off of what has happened, even just with the medical process. It was stated that no lawsuits, even if there were lawsuits, that they wouldn't strike down the ordinance, or that's supposedly, that's what has been seen in other cities. But not striking down the ordinance doesn't mean that there wasn't cost to the municipalities. So I would be curious to know that if any, what would the court, what were the court costs in those respective municipalities where a lawsuit may have occurred? Not striking down the ordinance to, or the conversion ordinance, I still, to me, doesn't say that there was not, that it didn't come without a cost to the city. We talked about lessons learned, so one question that I have, based off of lessons learned, what did it cost us, even with just the medical process? What it, were we profit, were we profitable through that process, or did we suffer a loss from that process? And I believe, I don't know if that'd be a question for Ms. Walton or for Mr. Blum?
Sure. I mean, I had sent a report out maybe a month ago after September legal bills came in. The medical process, because we got application fees upfront, we received a hundred and two thousand dollars of non-refundable fees. However, even though it was only five, maybe six lawsuits, we, I gotta put my readers on again, we spent a hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine-hundred-twenty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents in legal fees to defend ourselves. So we won, but it cost us, well, it's a net loss to the city of almost thirty thousand dollars. If you do a conversion, there is no application fee to offset the lawsuit cost, and you know darn well we're gonna get them. You, we can, maybe we can defend it, maybe we can't, but even defending it costs money to defend and win. So you gotta keep that in mind.
So I guess to that, that. So, I guess to that, that point, I think doing the conversion ordinance is asking for more trouble. We've already been sued in the medical process, and as has been stated at the hearing of the public, everybody was forthcoming with the challenges that they faced, starting up their businesses and so forth. But my understanding is no one is open and operated that through the medical process, and I understand, you know, the percentages of where the market is right now, and that people aren't making the money in it anymore, but at the same token, I don't feel that that's, to me, that doesn't weigh one way or the other for me. I don't, my job is to try to be a good steward of city resources, and I believe that this is asking for trouble, I believe that this is gonna cost us money. We can only imagine if you grandfather in the three medical applicants, who may come behind that were interested in recreational, those who didn't apply for medical because they were hoping for recreational. I think it's asking for trouble, and I don't think we should put our, set ourselves up for that. My understanding is that those who got the medical licenses can still apply as part of this recreational process, and I think, once you do a conversion, you've now taken the competitive nature of this process away. And I believe that it is state guidelines that sets up the competitive process for potential business owners to get this ball rolling for recreational, and I would feel that if the council chooses to go in a direction to allow recreational, which it sounds like that's the direction, I would, I would just advise extreme caution in how you move forward, and I would ask that we not set the city up for potential litigation. I guess one other question, I don't know if you have it in front of you, Mr. Blum, is, well, you said we spent how much in legal fees, or how did that break down?
Legal fees, defending the medical marijuana ordinance was $131,923.39.
And you said net loss of almost $30,000.
Correct.
That's a lot of money for about five or six lawsuits, in my opinion, and it's been more than clear that recreational generates more revenue. So, I don't have reason to believe that it will be any less than five or six lawsuits. In fact, I'm inclined to believe that it would be more, and I think we set ourselves up for some problems moving forward if indeed we do this conversion ordinance. I think the process, if you're gonna do it, you should still keep it competitive and let everybody compete for it like they should, but I don't believe that we need a, I agree, we don't, I don't believe we need an oversaturation of facilities in East Point, but we don't have any control over what people are choosing to buy, or how the purchasing of medical marijuana has changed. That's the nature of the beast, if you will, but I don't believe setting ourselves up for more litigation is the wise way to go.
Anyone else?
With respect to lawsuits, I mean, they're just a part of being a city entity. People will sue us for anything. Somebody could smash into the back of a snowplow, and they're gonna sue us. I mean, you know, it happens. Unfortunately, it's the nature of the beast here. I don't know that we can prohibit lawsuits from happening. I just, I mean, it's just part of lawyers, they just, that's what they do. They'll take anything and sue, so I don't know that we can really prohibit that. With respect to the conversion, we're probably gonna see base lawsuits no matter what. That's the bad part about all this. But getting the businesses in here would occupy space, would enhance the area, you know, they're gonna own those businesses, they're gonna keep them up, they're gonna maintain them, it's gonna generate tax revenue for us as well, you know, being there. Some of the businesses have offered to help out with certain activities and things like that, I know other communities have benefited from them, so I'm hoping that we would at least allow the recreational facilities. I do, I like the idea of the conversion, to be honest with you. I think they have gone through major hoops to get those licenses. It's not an easy, it has not been an easy process. You know, I agree with Councilmember Curly and what he had said, and I think it's a good idea.
So, in respect to the whole thing about people will sue, I know that, I know people will sue, but that's like saying that someone shouldn't lock their car door because people will break into cars and still, you don't do anything to make yourself vulnerable, and that's the only point that I'm making. There's, it's a competitive process for a reason, and if people choose to sue, even following those guidelines, so be it, but at least you can look and say, hey, I didn't do anything to make it any easier to invite more litigation. We've already been sued before within a competitive process. Some may deem those costs minimal, that's subjective, I guess, but I don't, I don't believe that you should just go ahead and just say, hey, let's make a conversion ordinance just for the simple fact that people might sue us anyway. And doing so, there is no, what did you say, I think, application fee that will, was it, no application fee that will help at least offset the costs of litigation. So, the job of, our job is to try to protect this city as best we can, and their resources as best we can. I mean, ultimately, it's gonna be, it's come down to a vote of council, a majority vote of council. If you guys have already decided, or if you feel more comfortable going with conversion, my job here is to just offer what I see from my perspective as a word of caution, but ultimately, it's a decision of council, and I won't belabor it any longer than that, you know? I just told you what I, what I feel will come, based off of what has already happened. We said we had lessons learned, I think we should learn from them, and that should be one of them, but if the rest of council feels to go in a different direction, so be it. That's it, that's all I have.
Mr., go ahead. Just briefly, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't think we should do the conversion ordinance, I guess, long story short, I think we should go forward with this, and I think, I guess mainly, probably agreeing with Councilman Baker here a little bit, but also, I think the one other point is, if we do go that way, the lawsuits will probably be different, and we could just be caught up in court, and that could end up taking longer than doing the other route. If we do this route where we change this and kind of do the same process again, I think we can be pretty certain that the courts won't hold up our process and allow us to go forward. If we do the conversion process, I think this goes against that competitive idea, and I'm not sure, I know, obviously, some people at hearing the public said there haven't been any successful lawsuits on it, but I don't know, I think we should just go forward with, I guess, the proposals, that's where I'm at.
Rich, I think initially, council's direction was a little bit different than the way our conversation's going tonight, so have you read any opinions that were specifically about conversion ordinances? Are you familiar with?
I looked at the materials that have been provided to me by the attorneys for the three medical marijuana license permits, but I have not, I've not seen any legal opinions that per se say that conversion ordinances are constitutional or do not violate state law. I don't know if you guys have an actual case, I'll take a look at it, but I've received their materials, but I have not seen a legal opinion from either the Court of Appeals or the Michigan Supreme Court. We'll get you the trial court stuff.
I think, I'd like to see the actual legal opinion. My position is essentially, initially, when we started talking about this, I was pretty irritated with the applicants for not having opened their doors. I know I've spoken to some of them, and they're aware that, how I feel about that, I know that the city lost revenue because they weren't operating. I also know that the, that medical became not marketable, so I understand where they're coming from. But I, at this point, so that irritation, I didn't want to sort of reward that behavior, but at this point, my main concern is getting buildings or facilities open and operating so that, one, that we get revenue from it, and two, so we don't have vacant buildings. So, and I'd like to do it with the least amount of, I guess, work in the application So, I guess I would like to see maybe an opinion on the actual conversion, what the courts have actually held. It might sort of give us insight on whether or not we, how concerned we should be about that.
Mayor, if I could just ask, is there an actual Court of Appeals decision that would be binding that you guys are aware of? Are these just circuit court opinions that have been issued by a circuit court not in Macomb County that says a conversion is actually constitutional and does not violate state law? Is there a case out there that says that? Do you have that?
We will look for you and see if there is.
Okay.
Off the top of my head, I don't think there is a Court of Appeals opinion, but any attack that's come under the conversion ordinance from all the cities that we've provided to all the ordinances, the trial courts have shut them off.
Yeah, that does it from legal counsel for the city, that doesn't make me feel comfortable, though, that, that there's no Court of Appeals decision that we could rely on if we were sued, okay? So, say we go the conversion route, we do that with the ordinance, and then we get sued, and you've already heard the, from Mr. Blum, the amount of attorney fees that the city has had to incur fighting lawsuits. Now, granted, we were successful in all of them, but still, that's $180,000 that could have been used elsewhere for the city. So, unless there's a Court of Appeals decision out there that, if we got sued, that I could rely on and convince a circuit court judge to say, Judge, this plaintiff's lawsuit is baseless, and here's the reason why.
We will provide you with an analysis that came from Dickinson, right, if you recall a long time ago?
And I'm aware of that, I've read all those materials, I'm just not aware of a case.
So, if I may, there's...
Could you go up to the podium?
I do believe there is case law where the conversion ordinance is mentioned, it's almost glossed over.
Is it dicta, though?
In, it's in published cases. There's also...
It's not, it's not gonna be necessarily subject to being upheld by another court. So, that's, those are my concerns.
But I think the other thing that I want to provide you an analysis of is, when you look at the case law, and you look at how the case law, like, all the published case law that exists, it's very clear that as far as what the competitive process is, that the city chooses the competitive process. There is no question that what the city did over the two years that it was analyzing the current applications was a competitive process, fits the definition of competitive process. There has been a lot of case law about what qualifies as a competitive process that I will provide to you, and I hope you provide to council, that I think makes it unquestionable. And not to mention that every trial court that's looked at has struck down any suit against it. And just a final note, that $130,000 spent was because application processes caused a lot more issues. This is one single issue. The idea that there would be as many lawsuits about this one single issue as the multitude of different issues that came up throughout the two years of application process and all those different lawsuits, there's no reason to think that it would be anything like that. And just a final thing, just to note, you had $100,000 in application fees, you're gonna get $156,000 a year minimum if you grant these licenses to offset any costs. So, this idea that that $100,000 outweighs anything is, I would just disagree with. But I will provide all of that case law, I think the case law makes it very clear.
Again, Chris Ayala, I've been practicing law for 30 years in Macomb County. David Redo is exactly right, and it's coming, I know you may look at me with some speculation because I'm talking to you on this side of the podium as an industry expert, but he's exactly right, he's not fluffing you, he's not fluffing any of the council people, he's provided everything, and I know he can provide you the case law that Rich is asking for in regards to the competitive process that's gone through the Court of Appeals. But I think from a ground perspective that you would most appreciate would be, who in their right mind would get in here and buy a building and start this all over again and start the application process again, after it's taken three years? Think about what has to happen. Somebody has to come in here, somebody has to find a building, somebody has to negotiate with the landlord, hey, I wanna buy it, but I can't buy it for six months or a year, but I wanna buy it, it's not gonna happen. Wherever the conversion ordinance is...
Understood, I'm gonna cut you off, just 'cause Rich was specifically asking a question, so I just wanna get back on track.
God, sorry about that.
I had one more, one more thing. See, in regards to the $130,000 that we spent, and to assume that the application fee or whatever else that we'll get coming forward, that that will offset anything, that's still assuming that we know what it'll cost us in litigation moving forward, we don't know that. So, my thing is, I have to go by what has already happened, I have to go by tangible things right here. I can't go by speculation, I can't go by, well, to some degree, there's speculation, it's trying to be cautious moving forward based off of events that have already transpired. So, for me, maybe it won't cost us as much money, but I sure hate to be wrong about that. That's still assuming that we'll only get five to six lawsuits that'll cost us the exact same thing, we don't know that. If there's more money in recreational, then my assumption is that people will try to sue and go for more money. So, that would be what I would go off of, and, you know, maybe there'll be some case law presented that'll say, that'll convince otherwise.
Thank you. You know, when we, what was it, two years ago, council members, we voted to opt out of recreational? I don't, I don't know if it's Councilman DeMonico, or you and I, or the other three are, weren't involved, I don't think, right?
I don't know, I might have been on when the...
You might have.
Happened.
Well, my, my...
I think I was.
Okay, but, doesn't matter. My point is, isn't it remarkable how humans change their mind about something that's important? You know, when we did that, we says, no, well, we're not, we're not gonna go with that recreational stuff, you know, kids will be out, off the door smoking, and they'll go to the park, and they'll smoke, they'll get all, and now here we are tonight, trying to decide how we're gonna deal with recreational marijuana. And on one thing...
Baker?
Should I repeat what I just said? I was gonna ask you a question.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. There were lawsuits on our medical marijuana. I'm trying to visualize, and you can answer this, I'm trying to visualize how many lawsuits, if we throw that thing out like we did Medico, three or four licenses, how many of this council decide on? I gotta believe that we would be swamped with lawsuits.
It's impossible to even predict or speculate, because I know the city of Warren has been inundated with lawsuits. So, how many the city could get, depending on the direction it wants to go, it's just, it's impossible to forecast how many would possibly file. It could be zero, it could be 20, it's just, it's hard to say.
Now, Randy, that figure that you, that you listed, I think that Tim Ferran's office also, does that also include his time, because...
Correct. It's the combination of Uri O'Brien and then MMRMA.
Yeah, 'cause I know our office handled a couple of those lawsuits, and depending on how they were filed, Tim Ferran's office also handled them.
Correct.
And I believe at least one of them went up to the Court of Appeals, too, they filed an appeal.
That sounds correct.
Yeah, I believe there was, the city won on a motion for summary disposition, and then the agreed party filed an appeal with the Court of Appeals, so that prolonged the process even more. So, I guess, quick, should we do a straw poll here? I guess it seems up in the air, if we, some wanna do conversion, some don't. I do not, I think we should go forward with that. I guess, should we pick one of those two and move in that direction, at least?
Sure.
No?
I think at this point, I'm in favor of conversion.
I am, too. Margaret said she was.
I'm in favor of conversion, yes, yes. I mean, even if we did the hybrid, like you, it's a conversion with...
Yeah, and I do think maybe I want any information provided to Rich to be shared with us, too.
Now, Mayor, would that be a conversion with awarding the three existing medical marijuana licenses, but also leaving any room for additional adult use or capping adult use at just the three as well?
I was thinking of keeping it at three. Council?
Yeah, I would, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would keep it at the three, but if... But if would you like to have a motion? Would that would be an order right now? We see where, where we stand?
Well, yeah, if someone wants to make a motion. Did that answer your question, Rich?
Yeah.
It did. I don't know as if we necessarily need a motion for this. I think I have my instructions. I'll get those materials from Mr. Ialo. And we can we can adjourn this evening's meeting pending the materials I receive. I can provide a write-up and then we can schedule another special meeting as necessary. That's what I would recommend.
So if you don't need a motion, you are aware then there's three people of, of the council that agree with conversion?
Yes.
And when, how long would that take you to write that up so we can put it on the agenda and vote on it?
It's gonna be dependent on how quickly I get the materials from participants in the audience, a chance to look at it, be with the city administration, and then probably look at some of the other ordinances that have utilized this system to see if in fact it is something compatible with our city. And then I'll provide an opinion to the council and the council have a chance to read that. And then we can either meet in a closed session or have another workshop scheduled.
Well, another workshop. Why, why, why would, if, if you have a direction that three of the council members want conversion on, you're gonna do all this research, which is great. Why do we need another workshop? Why, why don't we take a look at that like we do anything else that you write or the administration writes? And have it on the agenda maybe the second meeting in December or certainly the first meeting in January and just vote on it?
That's the council's direction.
Well, I don't know. It's my, it's Mike's suggestion. I don't know what the other council members are saying. But I just don't wanna drag this on till February, March.
I think we could, I agree with Mr. Curly, putting it on maybe first meeting in January. I don't wanna rush you too much. And then as an agenda item and then, you know, if, if there's a reason we have to have a separate workshop, we can address that at that point. The one other thing that I wanted to at least bring up at this point is I would like to see a deadline, like conversion for facilities that are opening, open and operating by, you know, and I guess that would be something for administration to look at. What would be a feasible deadline to put in there to make it realistic?
Being that the representatives are in the audience, does the council maybe wanna kind of discuss generally what the council would be interested in seeing and then seeing after administration's had a chance to look at that to see if that's actually feasible? So they kind of know a ballpark of where the council's at?
Well, I think I would just leave it to administration to figure out what's feasible. My, I mean, my position is as soon as possible. As soon as deadline we can set, that's what I would wanna do. Are there any other comments? All right. Well, I guess we have mayor and council reports for this agenda to Mr. Baker.
I'm good. I hope you guys are right and I hope I'm wrong. That's it.
Councilman Curly?
I'm, I'm, we gave, okay, we didn't need a motion. We gave him directions. I'm happy. I thank you.
All right, Councilman DeMonico.
Yeah, I got nothing.
Uh, Councilwoman Peshadlik.
I don't have anything either.
All right. I'll just say thank you to administration. I know that you kind of moved in a different direction, but I appreciate the information that you spent time gathering for us. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
You can pick. Moved by Councilman Baker, supported by Curly.
What?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
No.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Peshadlik.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 6:40.